We're some 50 people online and people are still trickling in, not many. First of all, apologies for Helen, she's lying in bed with a stomach bug and her husband's sick and her child is sick, so everybody is sick in bed. But I said I would lead the town hall today, the last town hall of the year, and I'm really happy that so many of you are able to join. So we have quite a simple programme really today. I'm going to give a short overview of the outcomes of the ministerial conference and then we're going to hear the perspectives of some of our colleagues who have been super invested obviously from the beginning. First of all, the co-hosts, we have Pablo from the SRSG's office and Stephen from UNICEF. And then Barty will say a few words on the involvement of children throughout the ministerial conference, Sarah on the Youth Advocacy Group, Emily on the Survivor Movement, and really anyone else that's online. I see Elsa from UNESCO and they've been doing follow-up work with the school-based group and then there's the parenting group as well. So after these short presentations, then everybody can really jump in with their impressions of the Bogota Conference. So if there are, unless there are any thoughts or questions to start with, I'm going to dive straight in and I will do a very short presentation of the pledges. But before that, I just want to remind ourselves of what we had set out to do at the ministerial conference. For those of you that are not on mute, if you don't mind just putting your mute, because I hear a lot of coughing and background noise, thanks. So we had five intended outcomes of the ministerial conference to end violence against children. And I think we not only achieved all five, but we added two more, which is really a great outcome. So the first outcome was the pledges. We really wanted countries to reaffirm their commitments to ending violence against children and I'll do a deep dive into those later. But really, we saw that 112 pledges were made and they're quite solid pledges. So that was the first outcome that we managed to achieve. The second one was the launch of the youth advocacy movements. And as you will have noticed, for people that were in Bogota, the youth were very, very active. There were 12 from the youth advocacy, or 10 from the youth advocacy movement were in Bogota and then there were an additional, I think, seven or eight that had accompanied governments. And you could hear them and see them around the space and they are making wild plans for the way forward. So the pledges, the youth movement, thirdly, the launch of the Pathfinding 2.0. So we had Najat participate, it was very eloquent on the work of pathfinding and for those who weren't there unfortunately, it was a beautiful closing session, the last plenary session where many countries came on stage to reaffirm their commitment to Pathfinding 2.0 and we'll hear a bit more on that from Pablo in a little while. The fourth commitment was to have children, young people and survivors very much front and centre. And again, we'll hear more from Emily and Sarah and Barty. But we were really, we were really happy that that happened, that there was strong engagement. And I think many of you will agree that we're there, what really made the difference was they changed the whole tone of the meeting. Having children and young people and survivors speaking, not only on plenary, but walking across the space really made a big difference. And so we had 1,400 people there, we had 120 countries, 80 ministers. So objectively, we really hit all the targets. In my view, two additional huge outcomes were great media coverage and we really saw that there was an op-ed by the SRSG and UNICEF Executive Director and WHO Director General that had huge uptake. And another great outcome was the interactive nature of the ministerial conference. It was so unsiloquent, people were making connections between online and parenting, between school-based intervention and response services. And while there were many communities of practice, all the satellite events were taking place, the side events were taking place, but it was a huge moment of cross-fertilisation for the field. And so while we had not intended that to be one of the outcomes, really bringing the field together to focus on solutions and multi-sectoral action and joint action really worked throughout the full five days. So those were the, I would say, the objective outcomes of the ministerial conference. And now I just want to do a deep dive into the pledges. Because we did, and with thanks to Cassia who's online but who has very bad internet connection, I will present the outcomes of the pledges, so you can have a look at those. So we had, this is 101, this is when it was done. Today we have 112 government pledges and I think maybe 15 or 20 civil society organisation pledges and they're still coming in. So I think Japan just came in and Mexico and Indonesia still do to come in. 89 countries presented their pledges on stage during the conference. So you can go on the website and you can click pledge and then you'll see the actual pledge and then we made a summary of each of the pledges so that throughout the conference, we had every government that was in a minute and a half able to say, for example, "I pledge to the children of Brazil that we will do A, B and C." And then on the background, there was a picture of their pledge. So you'll see on the photo gallery, you'll see the countries with the pledge on the background and then in the pledge tab, you'll actually see all the pledges. And we'll continue to update those immediately every time they come in. So this is the geographical distribution of the pledges. Majority from Africa, Americas was well represented, Asia as well, Europe also well. Middle East, I think we could have had more, maybe that's where we should have put a little bit more energy and Oceania as well. This is the number of countries per region. So in Africa, about 70% of African countries made pledges and came. Asia, 12 out of 43, so that's 27% of the Asian countries showed up. We didn't use UNICEF or WHO regional geographical distributions because it's too confusing because they're different. So you see, we have Africa and Asia. Middle East, 50% of the, 42%, sorry, of the countries made pledges. Europe, 38%, the Americas, 60% and they're still coming in, if I'm not mistaken. And Oceania, 21% of the countries. So this is where we see for our next ministerial, which countries have already made pledges and where we need to put efforts going forward to ensure that we bring other countries on board in these pledges to end violence against children. These are the pledges distributed, oh, sorry, pledges distributed by topics. So unsurprisingly, the ones that had the most attention were the ones that were also the breakthrough areas, so they're also the breakthrough areas because they're the ones that have the most evidence and the most interest behind them. So response and support services, which generally means social services, healthcare, justice services for children, safe and enabling school environments, parent-to-caregiver support and then also the legal and policy frameworks. So this is really where we broke down the pledges to see what they were focusing on. So we're very happy to see that they're focusing on the breakthrough areas as well as the legal and policy frameworks, but also of course on the child protection system. None of this can happen without the governance and coordination, without the human and financial infrastructure, the continuum of services and so on. Here, we can share some of these slides with you. This is where we looked really per pledge topic, which countries pledged. So addressing online harms, we had 12 countries and you see them listed here. Addressing harmful norms, child participation and community engagement. So we really tried to look into per topic, which countries are moving forward. And I just want to note on this that the Parent-to-Caregiver Group, the Global Initiative to Support Parents, they had a webinar last week where they brought together some countries that made pledges on parent-to-caregiver support. They've made a full Excel table where they're really breaking down each of these 49 countries to see what's within those pledges and to see how they can further support those countries to implement them. And similarly, Elsa's online but for the school-based interventions, so ending violence in and through schools, we will also be thinking with that community of practice, how we can support these countries, how these countries can learn from each other to scale up interventions around ending violence in and through schools. And these are the pledge evaluations, so we saw some were very solid and clear. Some need a bit of improvement just because they weren't clear, they weren't budgeted or they didn't have solid indicators and some needed quite a full revision. So we'll be reaching out to those countries to see how they can improve their pledge. And again, we're being very, very transparent and putting as much as possible on the website as soon as we receive it. And some of the strong pledges, Tanzania was very strong, again numbered, financed. So really suggest you have a look at some of these pledges. Iceland also a strong pledge with an amount pledged in kronas. Jamaica, similar, very detailed pledge of what they are doing and what they want to continue to do. And then what we're very happy about is that some countries have made financial commitments and that's really what we in fact went to see for all the countries of course. So we see countries like Kenya, Nigeria, Paraguay, Philippines, that are allocating part of their national budget to this area of work. Next steps, we are working closely with UNICEF and the SRSG to see how we can put this all on a website with a dashboard so that you can easily see what's going on because it will be updated regularly. So we want countries to be able to update their pledges. We want partners to be able to comment on pledges. And then of course, we want pledges to be implemented and we want to track those pledges. And we'll be doing that using different modalities. So we'll be working with the CRC Committee, with the Rise Up Forum of ISPCAN, with the Global Status Report of WHO. And of course, UNICEF is doing a lot of the in-country work to support the pledge implementation and monitoring, as well as UNESCO, UNODC. So we'll be working with all those different bodies to make sure that we're seeing what's happening in terms of implementation and tracking that and making it visible on the website. And that will be a tripartite effort going forward as it has been with SRSG and UNICEF Office. I think I'll leave it at that. So the outcomes of the ministerial conference were on target and we achieved them and the pledges were much better than expected. And with that, I want to just leave a few minutes for questions and then I'll hand over to either Pablo or Stephen. I don't know if Pablo's online, but I see there's a hand up. So over to you, Annarita.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
My microphone made a strange thing. Anyway, my question is very simple. I mean, in case we have in the following months and also due to our follow-up actions with countries in the region, we have countries that they want to pledge. Still, they have to do it through the global conference platform or there is another way? Or, I mean, yeah, this is my question basically.
The best is that they, we, I think we removed the form just because we want to rework the form to make it a little bit tighter. So for now, the easiest would be that they send us an email.
Okay.
And then we'll probably put a slightly adapted form back up on the website.
Because I believe a couple of days ago, I went to the website and then still found the pledge form. So maybe it's been updated. But in all cases, we will refer back to you in case we have countries want to make pledge or maybe they want to update pledge to be more consistent with our, you know, the guidelines and as you say, budget commitment and things like that.
Yeah, so exactly, thank you, Annarita. So just so you see, the pledging platform here now contains more information on how we will be following up. I see that they put the pledge details, so they can actually put it on the website and they can either update their pledge, send us an email. I mean, the emails come straight to us, so they can either update their pledge or add a new pledge. But we've tightened up the form a little bit.
Thank you.
Tush?
Hi, thanks so much. And many congratulations to the two of you who did so much greater things during the conference. So a bravo to both of you and your teams who are working through it. Just a couple of questions really. Just received an email from yourself about the deadline for the governments on the call to action. Previously, the deadline was set for November. Is there a new deadline for it? That's number one. Number two is during the conference, there was a mention about the WHO-led UN Resolution on Corporal Punishment. If there's any update on that, that I'd really like to know so we could share with our governments. And if they want to participate, how do they then communicate? Number two. And number three, the Pathfinder 2.0. I'm so sorry, I haven't looked at the updated information on the website. If it's there, that's fine. If not, could you please email that to us? Thank you so much.
Yes, Tush. Thanks, I'll just respond to those questions. And then Pablo, if you're around, I can't multitask right now. But if Pablo's around, then you can put your camera on. But just to answer to those three questions.
I have my camera on.
Ah, perfect, okay, sorry.
In the beginning, thanks.
Ah, there, now I see you, okay. So just answer your questions, Tush, on the, indeed, the call to action. We just got it translated into six UN languages and we resent it to the participants of the conference. And there's no deadline, we currently have 55 governments that have signed on. But many had said, "We never saw it in our language" or "We never received it" or "It must have gone to another part of the ministry." So there's no deadline, we're just trying to get it into the right hands so that more... If we know that 112 countries have made pledges, we're assuming that they should also sign on to the call to action. So just if you can nudge it into the right direction, then there's no deadline, Tush. We do hope that more and more countries will sign the call to action. In terms of the WHO Resolution on Corporal Punishment, this is really still in the making. There's a small group that's been formed led by, I believe it's Benah and Kenya, that are pushing for this World Health Assembly Resolution on Corporal Punishment. It would have to be presented at our executive board end of January. So that's in the making. Again, if your government's interested, we can add them to, I think there's 10 or 12 countries that have now created a small group to see if they can take that forward. And then on the question of Pathfinding 2.0, it's a perfect... Sorry, Tush? Yep, okay. And Pathfinding 2.0, I'll hand over to Pablo because Pablo, as I mentioned, we're just going to hear different people's perspectives and impressions of the ministerial conference, including yourselves, UNICEF, the children's group, the youth group and the survivor group. But maybe you can also answer the question on Pathfinding. Over to you, Pablo.
Just a little bit, Sabine, if you could, please send that about the UN Resolution thingybob to the government unit because we have pledged to end corporal punishment. So it'd be good if you could send it through and then I will follow through from here as well, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
That'll be great, thank you so much.
Pablo, over to you.
Hello. No, I was just wondering because your voice were breaking on the question to Pathfinding because I think it's more about what is the overall, I mean, where we are on the pathfinding. But I don't know if just to take the floor now and to see where we are or just to ask because I can imagine there will be other questions. What do you prefer?
Pablo, I think if you just give your impressions of the ministerial conference and say a little bit to Tush's question, what does the Pathfinding framework entail?
Yeah, I mean, this is why, because the question was so general that maybe that was the best way to say. So no, thank you very much for everyone. And again, like Sabine have said, we express gratitude for all the support. I think it was an incredible moment of mobilisation. It has been a lot of work over the last months and a lot of cooperation work with UNICEF, WHO, all of you, Sweden, Colombia, in ISPCAN, everyone. I mean, I will leave all the time people outside if we start nominating. So I think it was really highly motivating to see this momentum of really pushing for really addressing the back agenda in that kind of very comprehensive way. I think that as Sabina said, it was an important moment. You know, the work we have been doing since we, since the SRSG was entrusted with revitalising and revamping Pathfinding. It was not just the single moment of the conference of course, because it was, we had been engaging with countries since January, since he got requested to take this over her auspices. And we have been trying to, and I think the SRSG has been explaining this in a few occasions to all of you in those meetings. First of all, to try to ensure a very strong ownership, bottom-up approach, to try to mobilise a whole government and whole society approach to support this, the effort and to really have a forward-looking agenda to really ensure that whatever action is being taken from now on is also helping as an accelerator to ending violence against children. And seeing ending violence against children as not only limited to 16.2 in the SDG agendas, but there are many drivers of violence which are across the entire 2030 agenda. So working with the governments, I think closely and with all the partners here and UNICEF and WHO and all the colleagues, I think that was the culmination in the launching in Bogota. Where, you know, I think as I conceded with Sabine, there was a very strong moment to really have this recommitment with the process to ensure that we have champions that they are moving ahead with this programme. So the next steps that we have, that the SRSG has foreseen is that we are working closely, as you know, many of those countries have been undertaking national preparatory process for Bogota, where they have already identified what are their priorities and the areas where they would like to take actions, which will be of course part of their own roadmaps to, as part of the Pathfinders and others are in the process of updating and developing those roadmaps. So from now on, we are going to continue having a series of meetings with those countries and trying to incorporate in all the partners. When we meant partners is governments, UN, at large, you know, we are trying to push the Interagency Working Group on Ending Violence Against Children, which is composed of many UN agencies, but of course, our partners on this plus civil society organisations, faith-based organisations and then children themselves. So what we're trying to see is how from now until, let's say, June, July, this is the time we're seeing where we can come with the framework of what those programmes of the countries are, look like, to have then the first meeting of what will be the Pathfinding Coordinating Group of the Alliance to continue moving. I mean, we need to see that this is going to be in parallel. You cannot say, "Okay, we're going to do this on May and June", because there are many countries who have done these roadmaps as part of their Pathfinding obligations, but they are already moving with implementation, which is great. So I think we are going to be moving on parallel to try to ensure that we can help the different tracks as the countries move ahead. And we have been working on a more detailed operationalisation guidance of Pathfinding, which has been and is being done with governments and with partners. So we will be providing more clear information on how, you know, the Pathfinding full framework as it was foreseen for the launching in Bogota will be actually now moving on this operationalisation of the Pathfinding. Again, we are, there have been interests in supporting us on this. We continue doing within the existing resources and existing capacity of the SRSG's office. So I'm sure you are going to continue supporting us in this because Sabine and they were also for the office. So we thank many of you who have been approaching, recognising the support and the important work that the office has been playing, but also proposing, you know, actively how to continue supporting the process of Pathfinding to be a success. Over to you, I hope I covered, but I'm here for any question you might have. Over to you, Sabine and Stephen, please feel free to, yeah, to support whatever I said on the issues of Pathfinding. But clearly, I think that the preparations of this national preparatory process with the, you know, important support also from UNICEF have been really key in helping moving, you know, in this parallel track that I was explaining, to really ensure that there's a really strong substance, you know, and accountability framework on the new revamped Pathfinders. Over to you.
Thanks Pablo. Yeah, I just want to add that, you know, I really don't envy the SRSG's office because it's a little bit of a hot potato, the Pathfinding, because managing countries that are doing super well, some of the countries that should be improving, changes of governments and we know that many governments are changing now. So, you know, huge kudos to you guys, to Najat and Pablo and your whole team because you've managed this really well since you took it over this year. Over to you, Stephen.
Okay, thanks Sabine and hi colleagues. I just have two quick slides here. Are the slides displaying?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, first of all, I just wanted to...
You can put them on the show, Stephen, because we see both.
Okay. Yeah, sorry. First of all, I just want to underline everything that Sabine and Pablo said in their introductions. It's been a really great partnership working with all of you. We're quite proud of our pledge here at UNICEF, so I wanted just to share it with you all. And firstly, we're having a very strong focus on those three breakthrough approaches that came out of the conference. You'll see in the Bogota Call to Action, there's a call for governments to focus on these, these three evidence-based approaches, which if taken to scale, we believe, evidence tells us that they'll have the biggest impact on reducing violence against children and the harms associated with it. So we'll be providing technical and financial support to governments over the next five years to reach 70 million families with parent and caregiver support programmes, 142 million children with safe and enabling school environments and 30 million children at risk or experiencing violence with response and support services. So this is, this will be baked into our strategic plan at UNICEF. We'll be reporting against this every year. Just to add to that, there was a pledge made around data and we'll be supporting countries to strengthen their national data systems on violence against children, including through supporting introduction of the International Classification on Violence Against Children and new survey modules that are under development, one on sexual violence and one on responsive caregiving. And finally, given that many forms of violence against children are underpinned by gender inequalities and the scale-up of these strategies have the potential to address at the same time violence against women, we're also pledging to implement gender transformative approaches in the implementation of these strategies. So what are our collective priorities moving forward? And collective priorities, I mean, working with SRSG, with WHO and working with all of you on the call today. Firstly, and most importantly, at country level, where the rubber hits the road, we'll be working with partners to achieve universal endorsement of the Bogota Call to Action. And Sabine, thanks a lot for sending out an update on that this morning and the call to action in the different languages. And linked to that, there's the Child Protection Systems Framework of Action, which was also launched at the conference. And this is important because it highlights the infrastructure. Services and legislation, workforce, financing, governance, data and evidence and so on. That's all part of the Child Protection Systems Framework of Action. We need to establish work plans with government to support implementation of the pledges and support governments to report on pledges and encourage them to update their pledges with new and hopefully more ambitious and more higher-quality pledges. And in support of Pathfinding and the SRSG's leadership of Pathfinding, we'll be helping to support national multi-stakeholder coordination on violence against children. At regional level, work with WHO, SRSG and partners to organise regional post-Bogota inter-ministerial follow-up events. And these are already being planned in several regions to unfold in 2025. And we're also looking to integrate the actions from Bogota in regional and sub-regional inter-governmental processes, such as the ASEAN Regional Plan of Action on Violence Against Children, such as the Work of the Pacific Islands Forum, the South Asian SARC and CYVAC and the African Union Commission, ECOWAS and so on. Finally, at global level, we'll work with WHO and SRSG and others on this mechanism to monitor pledges, to maintain momentum and develop global roadmaps to drive outbreaks, outbreaks, uptake it should say, of the proven breakthroughs, the parent and caregiver support, safe and enabling school environments, and response and support services. So we'll be developing roadmaps for those. And the one we're prioritizing is the, the one on parent and caregiver support, which will be accelerated by the Caregivers Forum that's taking place in Spain in December 2025. Thank you very much. Back to you, Sabine.
Thanks a million, Stephen. And before handing on to Barty, I just want to highlight right now we have UNICEF and WHO and SRSG, but we are working hand in hand with UNESCO, with UNODC. We can't do this without the education sector. We can't do this without the justice sector. Health is also very weak. We need to get, social services is weak. So it really continues to be a multi-sectoral effort. And also, we can't do it without the regional bodies, as Stephen was highlighting. And most importantly, we can't do it without civil society. So, you know, the groups, I mean, that we're speaking with now, we have Barty from Save the Children and World Vision and Child Fund. The CSO Forum has been brilliant over the past, what is it, decade, almost, almost 10 years, driving this work at country and regional level. So it's not because we're the ones speaking now that we think that we can make it all happen. Just to be very clear, we continue to count on you guys. We Protect and also just had a session on, a big conference on online violence, an important area of work that we're going to have to consider also throughout and in the pledges. And I don't know if anyone is online from We Protect or Safe Online, but you're welcome to jump in after as well. And so thanks Pablo, thanks Stephen, and Barty. Yeah, over to you. If you can just keep it to three, four minutes, so we have time for questions.
Sure, great. Thanks Sabine. And hi, everyone. I just want to say a few words on behalf of the Children's delegation. First of all, the conference, I know for the Children's delegation was a really powerful moment that will leave a lasting legacy in each of their lives. Ten of the children out of the 12 were able to participate during the conference. And altogether, we have 12 members in the Children's delegation. And it was just absolutely incredible. You remember, many of you at the start of this journey, children were not really part of the conference. There were not planned to involve children. And we just want to take this opportunity on behalf of the CSO Forum to End Violence Against Children, to thank everyone that's on this call and all our partners, to thank you Sabine, WHO, UNICEF, SRSG, the Government of Colombia and Sweden for all your support and to really help ensure the voice and the power of children's voices was critical to the conference. And many of you will remember the Children's delegation really called for more structures and processes where children at the very local level are part of the solution, that they're not just seen as, as a problem that needs fixing, but their voice, their expertise, their perspectives and their realities really helped steer the drive towards ending violence against children. And we want to thank Pablo and his team and Najad and the SRSG's office for the continued collaborations to centering children's voices. And the Children's delegation called for more accountability against the pledges and promises made. They recalled that past promises have been made and they wanted these promises to be ones that are fulfilled. So we look forward to continued collaborations with the SRSG's office as you develop the alliances and pathfinding framework, where there's a commitment to ensure that the voices and expertise of children, children's participation and young people's participation is core and central to any accountability framework against the pledges. We want to say a huge thank you to the Government of Colombia. Many of you will not know, but the Government of Colombia helped to develop guidance specifically to streamline the Children's delegation's visa process. And they centrally handle the children's visa processes, which often is a huge stumbling block when it comes to children's participation at these kind of events. So a huge thank you where, where we were able to even help influence guidance and policy at this, this level to ensure that the voices of children can be heard. The Children's delegation are continuing to, over these next few months, to build their action plans, continuing collaborations with their own governments. Some of the Children's delegation's governments have not made pledges and some of them will continue to advocate that they do make pledges towards ending violence against children. Where the CSO Forum is also developing an activity resource that related to, to the conference and some of the follow-up activities that will support not only the Children's delegation, but broader groups of children to, to engage with the follow-up and actions and from the conference itself. So I just wanted to just remind you all that the connections, the collaborations across all the various agencies has been considerable. Children and the Children's delegation are keen to continue to be part of that, of the process towards ending violence against children. And the conference just really, as Sabine mentioned earlier, it would not have been the same if the voices of children were still invisible, if their voices and their expertise was missing from, from collaborations and communications and exploring solutions towards ending violence against children. Their position often in societies is discriminated, their rights are continuously violated. And for us to all come together to really remove as many barriers and obstacles to make sure that they are center, that we don't lose sight of what's happening to each of them, each of their lives, and that they're, that they're really a strong part of going forward. It's just absolutely remarkable what we can do when we do come together. Huge thanks also to our colleagues across CSO Forum, our partners, and to joining forces, to UNESCO and all our different partners that we continue to work with to make sure that children and their voices and their calls to action, we've also been exploring.
Right, Barty, I'm going to cut you, because we have two more people than you. Yeah, sorry.
Thanks, everyone.
Huge thanks, Barty. And really, the, the work you guys did was phenomenal in, in such a short, short space of time. And, and I know you're working closely with Isabel and Sarah from the Restless Development. And because, you know, often we want children, we want them to be there at the center, we want them to speak up, but then suddenly a year later and they're no longer children, they're young people. And, and we want them to continue to do that in another safe space. And we want the young people to continue guiding the children. I have adolescents, I have younger children, how they can guide each other through life and through making things happen. So with that, I'm going to hand over to Sarah to say a little bit about your perceptions on the conference and what you're planning to do going forward. Sarah?
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for joining today's town hall. And Sabine, just to confirm that you can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great. So, yes, Sarah from Restless Development, but also I saw Isabel you on the call. Yes, together with five youth mobilizers, we were in Bogota for the ministerial conference. And I'll just share a little bit about the pre and then during and then what we're up to now. So I think that was around April, yes. Yes, we started working closely with Sabine, Helen and the entire team to put together the, the concept of young people, you know, coming together, young people mobilizing to end violence against children. And it seemed like just, you know, something we're crafting around, but it came to, to reality when we were at the conference. And we, we, we recruited, we mobilized 10 young people from 10 World Health Organization host port countries. And these young people are with their passion to end violence against children. Some of them were survivors, but also some of them who are doing amazing work within their work to end violence against children. And our, the first event where we were at, and this was pre-ministerial, was in Geneva, where we, where we dialogued, where we interacted with pathfinders, reminding them of the conference, reminding them to commit and telling them why it's important again to commit at the conference. And it's, it's indeed wasn't our surprise to see that we had a massive of pathfinders, countries getting interested to join the network, to join the movement. So we had that whole lineup on the stage in Bogota. And this was our dream come true when we met them in, in Geneva around, around September. And as youth mobilizers, for us, the conference was a living testimony of engaging young people and seeing youth power at play. Because pre-ministerial, we had lots of the different youth mobilizers being engaged by, by different partners, working closely to plan for different events. I remember, I remember Emily, together with her team, under, under Brave Movement, then Safe Online, working closely with Marie to plan, to, 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 to design, craft how the whole satellite event was going to look like. And when I saw Marie in the, in the conference room in Bogota at Agora, Agora, speaking, you know, diligently, but also boldly to a thousand people within the room, that was, yeah, youth, youth power at play, but also seeing that young people's voices and energies and passion to end violence against children was, you know, being utilized, but also engaged at the conference. But also, the youth mobilizers, young people, we are the center of the national planning sessions. I'll just give an example of Kenya, where John Kin, a young person living with disabilities, engaged and working with, with his government in Nairobi. He used to move miles from Kisumu to Nairobi, those of us who know that distance, to just go and have discussions, meetings with his government, talking to them what they can commit to, what is feasible, what are the experiences that he, he, he got from persons with disabilities, that the children that he interacted with in schools. So that kind of linkage, linking the young people, children living with disabilities, and then John Kin carrying their voices to a planning session in Nairobi. And then the permanent secretary and then the minister going to Bogota with such, such experiences and committing. That was like, you know, youth power at play and seeing that we are linking communities through young people and then governments and at Bogota, at the ministerial conference. So, yes, thank you very much, everyone who engaged and who worked closely with the youth mobilizers at the conference. I will not mention all the different platforms, but we can all testify that we, we felt the energies, we felt the youth power, we felt the passion for young people at, at Agora when we were there, speaking to everyone about ending violence against children. What's ahead of us, yes, we are in discussions, we are in talks with different donors, because we all, we all had, well, at the conference, we launched the, the youth movement on ending violence against children. And we, we, we are continuing with this journey, we are continuing with this movement. So we are currently are looking out for potential funders, donors to fund our this great initiative. And yes, we are still calling out everyone, please join the movement. Let's have the children, let's have the young people, let's have everyone join this movement to bring all the voices of everyone from the grassroots to the regional, to the, to the global spaces to, to discuss, to talk about, but also to hold our governments to account, you know, and also hold them to, to their commitments, their pledges that they, they spoke, they talked about, they pledged while we were at the ministerial conference in Bogota. So that's it for now, and back to you, Sabine.
Thanks, Sarah. Just want to remind people, I mean, we're all exhausted. We're all sitting here like zombies on the, on the end of the year. But I just want to remind you that we have put so much work. I mean, the work UNICEF put into the national preparatory sessions, the work SRSG has put into the pathfinding, the work that the Brave Movement put into the World Guinness Book of Records and bringing the survivors, the work that Restless has put into getting the young people. And I can go on and on and on. So it's not for nothing that we're sitting here like zombies and exhausted and we're talking about a success in those five days of Bogota. No, it's a success over a whole 18-month period that has culminated into Bogota and that we're now going to keep going. So it's only the beginning. So I hope you all get a good three weeks rest and then keep going. And I just wanted to inject that a bit of, as Sarah was talking, it made me realize, wow, we came from very far and we're going even further. And over to you, Emily, on the amazing work of the Brave Movement.
Thanks, Sabine. I'm just going to share my screen quickly. Can you see that? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank you. There've been lots of thank yous, but I'm also going to do a couple of, a couple of quick thank yous. Yeah, the, the kind of space and opportunity that survivors, people with lived experience were given at this, this conference was truly, truly extraordinary and incredible. Thanks to, to the co-hosts and WHO, Sabine, Helen and others who constantly, you know, worked incredibly hard to ensure there was, there was space for, for lived experience perspective. So, so thank you. We really enjoy being part of it and, and, and can't wait for everything that is to come. And it's exciting to be on this call and hear about everyone's work and what's coming next. I won't go through this in detail, because I know that we haven't got that much time. We're going to be sharing a live report over the next couple of days with some of our kind of successes and outcomes from, from the ministerial. Wanted to focus in on some of these quotes from members of the Global Survivor Council, you know, around how every single detail was thoughtful, trauma-informed, respectful, caring. It's the first time I experienced an event where survivors are leading the narrative, not passively sharing stories. And that, the link to this live report will be shared with people, so you'll see it in time to come. But I, I wanted to really pull out that one quote, because I think that's what felt very different for a lot of us involved, who have worked a lot, supporting survivors is, is how much they were seen as experts and how much they were on the panel next to, you know, the deputy director of UNICEF. It wasn't, they were part of the solutions and part of the thought process and part of, really genuinely part of the dialogue. So, yeah, just incredible to have that opportunity and very proud of Brave to have been able to support people to, to take up those roles. In terms of kind of a bit of what's coming next with us, one thing that we really saw happen in the run-up to the ministerial, we were doing a range of advocacy and campaigning with a focus on 12 countries, around five policy asks. And one of them was around setting up, calling on governments, set up national survivor councils. If you're at the conference, you've probably heard a range of the Global Survivor Council's members talk to that. And there's been incredible uptake in that, and that's really exciting. It's in the Call to Action document. We've had a range of countries that formally pledged or opened up dialogue with us around setting up survivor councils in, in, in country. So that is going to be a big area for work for, for the movement moving forward. So something that I could say categorically, that we would not be in this situation having these conversations with governments if it wasn't for the ministerial. And those survivor councils are a way to really sustain and embed survivor engagement across conversations and policy dialogue around ending violence against children. So really exciting kind of sustainable influencing opportunity there. And the next thing I just wanted to share, and I won't take up any more time, is, is just that, of course, we, along with many others here, are, you know, keen and available to support on the kind of next, next steps around the kind of accountability and mechanisms around, around pledges and, and in the countries where we are very present, will be, will be on hand to do that and continue to be, yeah, on hand as a partner to, to all of you and all the work that's going on and continue to provide that lived experience perspective as we move forward. So thank you again and look forward to all the continued partnership.
Thanks a million, Emily. And I also just want to stress how great it has been to be able to call on the Brave Movement when there are events happening. It just gives a whole different tone, having a young person there, a child there or, or a survivor there, just changes the whole dynamic of a meeting or, or of a discussion. So huge thanks to you guys. I want to see if there's any questions. Please feel free to put your hands up. Isabel Santos, I was saying, maybe you, maybe you want to say something about the link between the children's movement and the young people's movement? And if there's any other hands, please put them up or just take the mic after Isabel has spoken.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say a huge thanks for, to WHO, UNICEF and our partners from the CSO Forum. It has been an amazing way since we started preparing to this conference. And we wanted to say that since the beginning, we want this global movement to be a movement of youth and children. As I've been said before, we are not going to be youth forever. Children are not going to be children forever. So we want to keep momentum and to keep this going. And I want to say right now, huge thanks to Barty, because in the middle of all the chaos amid the conference, she was amazing, trying to make time for us to meet the children. And we had these really quick conversations with children and youth we met during the conference. And we tried to put together like the thoughts and perspectives in a draft of a joint declaration that would be like the vision for a movement that could bring together children and youth. But we understand that participating in the conference is such a privilege. And if you really want to commit with including children that have been excluded from political spaces, we, we need to, to have this, this approach to give the space for other, other people to come in in the space. Uh, we we need to to have this uh this approach to give the space for other other people to come in in the space. And talk about what a global movement uh should look like. Uh, so we are planning and we'd like to plan this with you all partners. Uh, what does movement should look like? So we would like to have a moment, maybe in a line meeting, to discuss this, you know, what do you envision, what children envision and youth? And to bring together many people who couldn't be part of the conference, uh to think about what they need, what they want, what are their challenges? And what we can do uh to 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 be the bridge and to help. Uh, so you might be receiving emails and updates uh from us and also from the C S O Forum. Uh, once we have the time uh to make these conversations, but that's it, just a quick update and thank you so much.
Yeah, and also just to let you know, building on Isabel's saying, we're gonna be doing careful planning with the youth group so that we're super strategic. I think until now, as a community, we've been quite strategic and putting our energy in the right places to make change. I think we have to continue to not get dispersed and, you know, get thousands of young people and we don't know what they're doing and where it's going. So we need to, and so we'll be doing that with the young people and children and survivors going forward, so that's very exciting. Um, are there any other questions? I see in the chat, there's discussion about post Bogota regional events, those are being planned, which we're also very excited about. Uh, we are looking, of course, into the next ministerial conference, as was announced in Bogota, oh, no, no, not in Bogota, somewhere else, um in the end of twenty twenty six, looking into it. Which country is politically stable enough and and allows easy visas, but all that is under discussion. Um, and in between, there will be regional meetings, as Stephen mentioned, there's the parenting forum, so one of the breakthroughs is parent caregiver support. That will take place end of next year in Spain, which is also a big moment. Um, I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything, question anything. No, I don't see, oh yeah, Isabel? And Serena?
Maybe Serena can go first, yeah?
Are you sure, Isabel? It's okay, no, um, nice to see everyone and congratulations again, you know, it obviously was a huge, huge uh effort. Uh, and seeing all the partners joining, working together towards this achievement is great. Um, and it sets a great basis for two thousand twenty five and beyond, so congrats again. I just shared in the chat the key highlights from one of the site, the light events that was hosted along the ministerial, which is focusing specifically on online harms. Of how or the or the when technology can facilitate um various forms of violence. You will see that the key highlights shows commitment from um over ten governments, a lot of participation uh both globally and in Bogota. Including a lot of media coverage, reaching a million of people, which is very encouraging as we set to continue this agenda. So I just wanted to to say that Safer Line is here available and we'll continue to work on this. Um, to continue integrating, you know, online risks or digital harms in wider efforts to address violence. It was great to see the call to actions Sabine shared today that has specific paragraph looking for accountability, integration and evidence generated. Education and support to parents across the different agendas. So just to flag, Safer Line is available to support on this, you know, so how we can uh in practice integrate online and digital harms to children in the other agendas. There you guys are working on and also take the opportunity to wish everyone Happy New Year and looking forward to working with you uh next year.
Thank you, Serena, Serena's from Safer Line, thank you very much. Um, briefly, Isabel and Tush, and then we're going to wrap up.
Yes, yes, I just wanted uh to know where we can find more information about the parenting forum. Um, and I don't know if there's someone who here who can comment, links, anything, any resources.
Isabel, I I think UNESCO is is leading on the parenting forum. Um, but just as we have been until now, we are super transparent, we're trying to push out information to you all the time. We'll be hosting these town halls, uh maybe four times a year, maybe six times in the year. So you will definitely receive the information when it's there, but Stephen, I don't know if you wanna add anything at this point?
Um, feel free to reach out to me directly if you want more information on the um the parent, the caregiver forum. I don't have any further details right now.
Tush?
Yeah, hi, Sabine, just just to get it clear in my head, so pathfinding two point zero means it's just the existing S D G goals by twenty thirty. But with more strategic support to the government, is that it? There's no new framework as such, right?
Pablo? The question is, sorry, Pablo, you're on mute. The question is, is if there's a new framework? Sorry, you're on mute, Pablo. I see your lips moving.
Hello, finally, no, it was, um, I I think it went to another uh issue of the uh of the uh microphone. No, thank you very much, I mean, there is uh there is there is no new framework, what we have been uh doing is um uh we have been working with uh those countries that uh. Are pathfinding to be sure that uh they take this opportunity to uh have a renewed roadmaps by June, you know, working together. Some of them, they have already done it because it was part of what they have been doing as an effort to go to Bogota. And others are either updating their roadmaps or they're just having a new ones. So we are be working with them, uh grouping them by regions from now uh until June. To come back to June when we have the hor- um cohort of uh updated new roadmaps to them to be able to. To um to continue working on it, but as I as I said, it's not. Is isn't as 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 um Sabine was saying, it's a difficult um uh package. Because we don't want uh to delay implementation as we have been doing, no? We have been moving in different tracks with all the colleagues uh in different countries and city societies. So there are some that they are already implementing, so we are moving in the same uh kind of path to be sure that we don't delay implementation when that is happened. But at the same time, we are having a a a full package of the cohort of of work by by hopefully by by June.
Yeah, and that quickly, Victoria, maybe you can put your uh question in the chat, but uh just to say, Tush. I think we don't want a completely new framework for pathfinding, I think it's brilliant what S R S G is doing, is going with the countries that they have, building on the structures that they have. And I think we should slowly kind of continue to build the plane as we're flying it. And I'm sure, Victoria, you're gonna ask about pathfinding cities, and I'm sure Pablo's gonna say same thing, we're still thinking that through and seeing what works. But I'll let you ask your question yourself, Victoria.
Thank you very much, very quick, Sabine, thank you, but it was in line with this previous question. Inspired uh uh in the architecture of United Nations, where does it belong to? Because I need a a counterbite beyond the inspired working with with Matito and Paula, et cetera. To get online with other cities that are implementing Spire at a national level. And that was my my question about the the um framework of Inspire, where is it anchored? That that's it, and how it's this relates to pathfinding city.
Victoria, I don't know if Pablo has another answer, but I think it's a really good question and I think it's one we still have to figure out. You know, there's the framework, there's the We Protect, there's the Child Protection Systems one, there's Inspire. And I think we need to see what role we're going to play in that knowledge exchange uh for the next ministerial conference. So, and if I'm not mistaken, I think Pablo, Stephen and I, our agencies need to put our heads together with the Inspired Working Group, with We Protect, with the Child Protection Systems Group to think that through. I don't know, Pablo, Stephen, you wanna add anything? Because we're on time.
So yes, uh from my side, I mean, basically, as I've been saying, I mean, this is uh, we are just trying to ensure that whatever is going to be in the plan is really a strong inner ship. And and countries, what they commit, what they are going to do, they are going to implement it at the end. So what we want is change and and to accompany this change. And everything, you cannot disassociate what is going to be in pathfinding from what has been the pledges of the country in the Bogota Conference from what they have already committed with the C R C. So it's all a chain, no, in terms of what is important and and what they are already actually implementing with UNESCO and others. So so we we want to have a comprehensive view of that and then uh and then um uh to see how this uh. Global forum, if you want, you know, is going to be able to continue supporting through peer learning and other possibilities. Now, uh as as we discussed, the question of the of the of the cities is is a very important one. Uh, we are still, uh, I mean, we have, first of all, we came to a moment to really ensure that there was a cohort of countries who were pathfinding, who want to continue being pathfinding. So that it was the important landmark and what that means in being a pathfinding. I mean, it's not just a question, I want to be a pathfinder, what kind of information, what kind of sharing, what kind of practice you are putting. And what we are very satisfied, not only with the group, but also with new countries that wanted to join. So now the next step is just to ensure that uh this is operationalized as it has been envisaged by them and by the S R S G. And then from them, move on. Now, the question is that uh we are not going, again, we cannot just say, hey, cities, stop, don't do anything until pathfinding find a way, which is. I understand that i- in the previous composition, it was also some gray area. So what what I think is important is, of course, encouraging cities to continue working on this track. And then uh we are trying to find what is the best mechanism to ensure that uh we can also uh capitalize on on the good work of 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 pathfinding uh cities as well, you know? Uh, now, there are things that we need to clarify, what what is the role of a of pathfinding cities in a country that is not pathfinding country? Uh, so we need just to find what will be the 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 framework of operation. But I think, I mean, nobody's saying don't stop the cities to continue working, actually, this is great. And and but we will be finding, we will be funding the, as as we are doing, putting the blocks of this new structure. What what is from the S R S G's to ensure that this structure has a solid basis. Uh, and a solid framework of accountability and then a solid support to whatever is being done. So I know there is some frustrations because we are doing little by little, but it's mounting everything in a in a way that we would like to be uh as strong as possible. And 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 you know, the support we are getting, I mean, thank, we have had a a good support, but uh but as Sabine was putting it, we're trying to do the best.
Thanks, Pablo, and we're four minutes over time. I really wanna thank each and every one of you for being on these calls, it's just been brilliant, your inputs have been brilliant, your questions have been useful, your critical thinking. Just keep everyone on our toes and let's keep moving this. I wish you all a lovely holiday season and we'll be back in touch next year. Thank you, bye bye.
Bye, everyone.